The spotlight's on Ryan.
I call to order the May 21st, 2018 Regular Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates.
Present.
Ms. Bolton.
Present.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby.
Present.
Professor.
Present.
Mr. Morosky.
Present.
President Jones.
Here.
I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, May 16th, 2018, and the business meeting, May 16th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry, minutes are approved. This morning's presentation, Superintendent Mitchell, would you introduce our presenter, please?
Gladly. So you've seen presentations provided by principals and cute kids around Vision 2021.0 and 2.0. So now we want to share with you what is to come. This is Vision 2023.0. And we have our Assistant Superintendent Susan Bunty, who is going to be joined by the principal of Sailor Park, which is in 3.0. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm speaking to school to all of you. It is my absolute pleasure to be here with Mr. Jamie Souders this morning and here to talk with you a little bit about Vision 2020 3.0. So we know that the Vision 2020 process was created to really help cement our commitment to equity across our school district and to also strengthen our neighborhood schools as we prepare students for college and career. And we have been incredibly fortunate to see the positive outcomes from our Vision 2020 1.0 schools. You may remember a few months ago, we had presentations about the accelerated student growth that the Vision 2020 1.0 schools have achieved. And we also had the good fortune of attending the board meeting at Westwood and seeing some of the entrepreneurial pieces in action that the students there have dedicated themselves to and to also see a presentation by Chase School. This year, Vision 2022.0 began its journey. And I think we will all remember the presentation by the staff and team at John P. Parker, the little cute adorable student with the eggs, who presented them and reminded us about the work of the global work that Parker is doing, as well as our board meeting at Bon Hill. It is my absolute pleasure to be able to introduce to you the Vision 2020 3.0 schools. And there are six moving forward in this cohort, including Cove Dale, that will focus on the Community Leadership Academy, Evanston, who is doing career awareness and exploration, Mount Airy, known as Flight, who is really focused in on learning through integration of their technology into their learning, Sailor Park, who you'll hear more about this morning. They're really diving deep into community-focused work and project learning with community enhancement. Silverton is focused on their Digital Leadership Academy and Wynton Hills Academy, which is going to focus in on the integration of technology and arts. So through this second semester, we've had bi-weekly meetings with our principals, our resource coordinators, and our central office liaisons to really make sure that we have our plans in place to roll out for next year. We've had very careful meetings with our treasurer's office representatives, who've kept us on track with our budgets, and also with our Office of Community Engagement. Please note that all kickoff celebrations have been scheduled for August, and you'll receive a list of these dates in your board packets next week. So I would love to stand here and talk more, but I think it's perhaps best to hear from a person who is actually living this work. Mr. Souders has done an incredible job of really engaging the community around this Vision 2020 process, and that's where Vision 2020 begins, is in the community. So, Mr. Souders.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to address you this morning. So I'm going to talk about our community engagement process, and it was pretty much born out of our partnerships. We have a pretty good partnership with our Sailor Park Village Council, and then the Community Learning Center Institute is our Community Learning Center partner as well. They were asked by the village council to assist the village council in creating their development plan to file with the city. So we decided, since we have such strong partnerships with them, that it would make sense for us to do all of this engagement work together. Because we know a strong Sailor Park school makes Sailor Park Village a much more attractive place to live. Strong Sailor Park Village makes Sailor Park School even stronger. So we kind of just put everything together and did the whole engagement process at once. So what we did with our process, we feel like we flipped it from what we had heard from other schools. Talking to other principals and seeing other engagement processes, it felt like schools had some idea of what they wanted to do when they engaged the community. We realized that our community is in the beginning stages of a pretty big transition. A lot of young families are moving to Sailor Park. And we felt like in order to truly prepare for the future, we need to embrace and engage that portion of our community, along with the folks who have lived there for a long time. So we went to the community to listen. We didn't go with any preconceived ideas of what we wanted to do as a school. We wanted to hear what they wanted from the school. So we went to them, we had them research and develop ideas, and then we took those ideas to our staff, our students, and our families. So you're going to see up here, this is just some of the meetings that we put into our engagement process. It started over a year ago, and we had 15 to 20 meetings, even more than that. And that was just really the education and youth portion of our community engagement process. We had several community-wide meetings. Clicky led most of those meetings, and then people chose what committees they wanted to serve on. We had an education and youth committee that met multiple times to really dig deep into what they wanted to see in Sailor Park School. So these are just a list of some of the meetings, some of the things that we talked about, and some of the things that we came up with. From those meetings is how we came up with a community-focused, project-based learning idea for Sailor Park School. So here are some pictures. This is one of our community-wide meetings. Most of those had well over 100 participants. Ms. Bolton attended, I think, more than one, multiple meetings. We also had partners from Mount St. Joseph visit those meetings and discuss building more partnerships with us at Sailor Park School. So we really wanted to reach out and get information from the community to make a decision. So here, we also engaged the students in a variety of ways. So the four pictures on the corners, that was our back-to-school fair last year in August. And we simply just asked them what they wanted to see in their own school. So we kind of started a process with students just to get ideas. And then the picture in the middle, we also took students with volunteer help through the community and asked them, what do you want to learn more about in your community? What do you want to do to try to help your community? So we took all students throughout the community. They took pictures of things they wanted to learn about. Each group had iPads where they could take pictures on it and bring it back to us. So we already have ideas to start some of the projects that we're going to use moving forward. We do have some early adopters. Our 7th and 8th grade kind of dove into it a little bit this year. This was a project just completed, and they called it their Living Wax Museum, where each student researched someone in history, and then they had to basically present to the rest of the school who that person was. And so when a young student walked up to them, they were kind of completely still, like they were a wax sculpture when someone walked up. Then they presented as they were that individual. So the young man on the left was Thomas Edison. He presented like he was Thomas Edison. The other thing 7th and 8th grade did this year was participated in National History Day for the first time. So we did have one team, the four ladies you'll see here, who did qualify to go on to the state competition, first year Sailor Park has ever competed. And we thought, since they did so well, we wanted to ask them what they enjoyed about learning from this method, using projects versus kind of a traditional method. And that's what you're going to see in the video.
I liked running through the projects project rather than sitting at a microphone because you get to experience new learning skills and... Basically, you get to explore more and then set up the next step.
I like the project more than, you know, taking notes in class because, like, sitting there, you won't, like, you don't get to pay attention, and like, if you take notes, you're most likely lose them. So it's like more, you get more experience and more learning and stuff out of doing the project and going places and stuff like that.
I like the project more because instead of learning in class, learning about something in class, you get to go out and actually experience what you're learning instead of being able to have something to say about what you're learning.
And for me, that last quote kind of hits the nail on the head of why we're moving toward project-based learning. It's about experiencing the learning and then being able to develop what you, you know, develop your own words, and you can actually discuss what you learned. So I think she really nailed it. So our challenge is not finished. This is community-focused, project-based learning, so we're going to continue, we're going to continue engaging the community. And we've done that already with some other things that we've done. So right now, every week on, I believe it's Thursday, we're doing a community storytime for early childhood education. That was one of the real big focuses from our community, is they want more opportunities for early childhood, not just preschool, but even kids who are before preschool. So this one thing, we started right away based on that community engagement. We're also partnering with some community members in order to have a summer learning program for some of those same kids who are pre-preschool. The other thing we've done is, the other community concern, was options for our students for high school once they leave Sailor Park. So one of the ideas, which was a big, huge-picture idea, was maybe building a partnership with Mount St. Joseph University on some sort of dual-credit enrollment program, if they were willing to do that. So Ms. Bunty, Ms. Mitchell, and I met with the administration at Mount St. Joseph just two weeks ago, and they are at least interested in exploring options that are out there. So it's the beginning stages, but we heard from them loud and clear, they are definitely interested in looking at some of the models around the country of schools that are doing that, and seeing if that can be continued and added to a CPS Sailor Park and Mount St. Joe partnership. So I do want to invite everybody out to our kickoff, which is August 9th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. We're going to have a lot of fun, so I hope, look forward to seeing a lot of you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Souders. You can applaud.
Do you have any questions for us?
Questions or comments from board members?
Well...
Ms. Bolton.
And I know I have to keep it very short, but as I said, I love Sailor Park. It's certainly where I started my CPS years. I'm very, very interested in the project-based piece, because I know that's something that's part of New Tech at Aiken as well. But the learning in place speaks to neighborhood schools more than anything else. And it's, you know, it's the teacher and the kid on the log or whatever walking down the street. So I think that learning in place is fabulous, and I have a great interest in finding a way that we can enter into that relationship with Mount St. Joe or whomever. Because I know that we've been a very good partner to Mount St. Joe for many years because they are producing such great teachers, especially in the special ed area. So I would think that that reciprocity is something at uppermost in their mind, in their community's mind. So I think this is great, and I will say this to board members, especially newer members, we've come a long way on Sailor Park. There was several, many months, many years ago, in the last decade, there was even contemplation of giving this building away. And indeed, it was both the Sailor Park people getting on the buses and coming to a board meeting that we held off-site, some other school, and showing up, as well as the fact that obviously the board had better thoughts, because we were even at three who were actually advocating that. So it's one of our little crown jewels, I think, is Sailor Park School. And you are rebuilding the community via that school.
Thank you. Mr. Morosky.
I just want to say, congratulations on all that hard work getting to this point. Our Student Achievement Committee has been privy to some of the awesome work you've been doing with Adeline down there and some of the exciting things that may come for the future of the school that I can, I think I can speak for at least the two members who are here, we're both really excited about. And also, just one last thing I'll throw out there. So project-based learning is something I was extremely interested in when I was a teacher and an AP, and I know that it'll probably require some kind of additional training, so just let us know whatever you need, because that's not going to be a one-size-fits-all teacher in service. And I'm just super excited about it. I have a lot of friends that live out there and started this Sailor Park Sustains Music Festival, my musician buddies, and so I know they're super pumped too, because a lot of them have young kids. So just wanted to pass on my congrats and let us know what you need.
Thank you very much. Other comments or questions?
Okay, Mr. Souders, thank you very much. We look forward to hearing more about what's happening at Sailor Park. And Ms. Bunty, thank you for presenting our Vision 2020 Phase III, and also look forward to hearing more about the broader piece of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, Ms. Bolton, would you present your board matters?
Oh, yes. And they are the 591 and also, well, later start. Later start, yes. Brilliant and high, including that involved, the start piece from, and the engagement piece that are in research.
And that is the movement that's been there for, oh, thank you, I'm going to turn it on. The movement that's been there for about two, almost two and a half years now, which is to see what we could do to move our high schools to a later start, kind of the golden period, if you will, that makes it better for the health of children and also possibly higher achievement. And I know we're expected to have, kind of file an end report from Student Achievement by the end of this month, combining with the work that we've done. We also know that the report that Student Achievement will file will probably come along in early June rather than late May. But we are aware that the movement is alive. It still has not gone through all of the schools that it needs to go through and does lack indeed some diversity of both class and race and culture. So that's part of their work that they would have to do. We also have reached a point, I think, where we do agree that later starts are better for the health of students, but we haven't reached the point that necessarily all of the proof indicates that academics necessarily achieve higher heights as a result of it. It's more of a health issue for us, I think, as we've been talking about it and listening, it's more of a health issue than an academic issue. The other piece is that the administration is still waiting for Metro to submit to us a more final report about staggered starts within that later starts, because the thing that they submitted to us was one that dealt with only everybody starting at the one time, which then made it mean, I think it was going to cost $60 more million than the $60 million we already spend on overall transportation. So that's an issue. What, two things to draw attention. One of the great concerns, because besides financial piece, is the idea of the extracurricular piece, because we also know there may not be a cause and effect, but there's a correlation between extracurricular and student achievement during the day. The other piece does fit into another transportation issue and fits into the neighborhood school piece. The reality is, part of the problem that our families have is the long travel time because they do make choices to send their kid to a different neighborhood school or a different magnet. That being the case, some of the concern about later starts or very early starts is really also about travel time. So that's an issue that has to be addressed, and it looks in a comprehensive way. We're trying to address that by beefing up our neighborhood schools and also finding ways to address the transportation piece. So we will submit that report at the end so that we have a chance, Mr. Morosky and I, can finally meet with a couple of the other advocates and also meet with Ms. Worley to finalize it for the board. It's our understanding it will not impact next year, except to the fact that the seven-hour slash seven-bell day for high schools will, might impact the later start for one or two schools or something. But it shouldn't be seen as moving towards a later start as much as the equity of instruction.
Thank you. Do board members want to add to Ms. Bolton's presentation or have questions or comments? Thank you. We look forward to your report in June.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay. Does anyone have any kudos?
I should have gone right into it, I'm sorry.
You want to add one? Yes.
Just very quickly, House Bill 200, we received the...
Notice from OSBA to take action on the voucher bill. Apparently, there's sessions of the General Assembly, if you believe some of the fodder out there, the secret bills that are being passed very quickly, and apparently wants the voucher bill. And we were asked to act on that. So I asked that our governmental relations, people take a look and make some phone calls, and they're in the process of doing that. But the question arises, is this something that we feel strongly about and want to support? Because this has to come from the board. Just because OSBA and, you know, BASSA and all of those groups agree with it doesn't mean we necessarily do. This one kind of looks like, you know, one that we would assume we would support, but we can't assume that. So my question is, does the board want to take a position on House Bill 200? And if so, it sounds like we have to do it rather quickly.
Well, my question, not so much a question, a comment. I believe we all received it in our emails, but can we get like a summary of the detail around what the language of the bill, so that we can have an opportunity to think about it as a first look before we, when is the action supposed to be taken?
Immediate action. They're meeting very quickly. If we can get that now and discuss it under inquiries and updates, that might be the way to do it. Can we ask staff to provide us with that bill summary? It should have been in the notes from Finance. Is it? It's not in our minutes.
No, we don't have any minutes from the committee.
Okay, so if we can do that.
Can we do that, like, quickly? Okay, thank you. Dan, thanks.
And just for clarity, for Ms. Bates, when you say support it, you mean support OSB's rejection of it?
Yes.
Okay, not, okay. Because the bill, it's the voucher, it's the voucher bill that makes it proliferates the vouchers, right?
Right.
200, okay.
Right. Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Bolton.
Yes, I think to Mrs. Bates's point, there's a number of pieces of legislation that they're going to try to pass quickly, and one of them is that voucher, which is 200, and I think it is an expansion of the opportunity for vouchers, and certainly we would, and I don't have any more knowledge of that than that. There's also the 246, which is about suspension and expulsion, and I know that, and truancy, and I know that Mr. Miles has been involved with that. The other one that I was going to report on briefly today is the 591. And that 591 is the one that deals with the report card, the district report card and school report card. There is action on it, and our administration had a whole contingent ready, and it's also brought the information, great information, to the sponsor. And so there is going to be action this year, this summer, very quickly, about the report card. It may not be 591 like we really want it, but it might be the step towards 591. And the reality for the 591 is to eliminate, there's a substitute bill, and it's all been assigned to the Education Committee now, and they're only going to have a couple of meetings about it. And part of it is getting rid of the grade, the letter grade. But the substitute right now, and I shared, I think, with the superintendent, what was in writing, what the substitute looks like, which is going almost toward a star, some sort of symbolic, whatever. And it does, though, capture some of the most important things of 591. I cannot think of anything that is more important than getting that report card changed, not only for ourselves, but all the school districts, suburban and urban, but more particularly, I can't think of anything that's more important for economic development in this city and for the expansion of neighborhood schools, which we must have, both financially and culturally, than getting those report cards changed. And I would like to make sure that the administration, and maybe this is an assignment, but I'm going to do it while I'm remembering it, it wouldn't be bad for the administration to present to the board in a business meeting like this, the presentation that Representative Duffy presented to us, because nowhere have I ever seen such clarity about why the report card is inherently discriminatory against people of color, against people within poverty, and people that live in urban, very, very mobile societies. It totally, I mean, if they don't change it, forgive me, we ought to sue them, because it is inherently discriminatory. And this guy has captured it. He's on his way out, but I will say we have very conservative people at the State House like Mr. Brinkman and Mr. Seitz, who are supportive of the change. And there's even some hope that even this overall district rating, letter grade, might be suspended and not happen this year. And we need to all be testifying for that.
Yes.
Then the superintendent and her staff has done a great job presenting what we need.
Okay. So just to summarize, so we have House Bill 591, which is right around the corner, and we've already been at the table to voice our opinion. Sounds like there's, we are going to be probably voting to support the action on that. And then with House Bill 200, that's kind of an urgent-ish matter, and once we get that, if we can just take a look at it, and it sounds like we need to be moving on that as well. Okay, any other questions then related to board matters? Does anyone have any kudos? Mr. Morosky?
I have a couple kudos. So my first kudo is, the Hawkins Educator of the Year Award that's put on by Western and Southern was a couple weeks ago, and President Jones and I were there, and we saw a number of, close to 20 or so, Cincinnati public educators get recognized, and it was really, really great. And the winner was Ms. Jo Guido of Clark Montessori. And in addition to being recognized, she received a check for $10,000, which is no small chunk of change. And so I would like to extend our congrats to Jo Guido on an awesome career. I know she's got to be looking forward to the summertime to take a rest and find something fun to do with that $10,000. Also, I would like to give one more kudo to some students whose names I don't have in front of me, but I do have the six schools that they represented. I was asked in honor to present awards to six students at a Westwood Civic meeting for their civic engagement, kids who have gone above and beyond the Call of Duty. Westwood Civic does this every year, which I think is a neat thing for students who get out in the community and really dig in. And those students represented Western Hills, Dater Midway, Westwood School, Dater Montessori, and Gamble Montessori High School. So kudos to those kids as well for getting engaged.
Thank you. Ms. Bates?
Yes, and I have a couple of kudos. The first one is congratulations to CPS Food Service Department, who was just recently awarded the 2018 Champion of School Breakfast Award winner. I give out the food awards, this is awesome. It was presented by the Ohio Department of Education. We were one of 10 districts statewide presented with the Champion of School Breakfast Award, and the winning districts were recognized for their innovative and collaborative school breakfast practices. And Jessica Shelley and Bill Moring represented us at that award ceremony. And just if the, just so the public knows, we have universal breakfast at all of our schools, free breakfast, and it's pretty awesome, a pretty awesome thing for all of our students. So congratulations on that award. And the other kudos I would like to extend is to the staff of Pleasant Hill Elementary. Just as a brief follow-up, the little girl who was hurt so severely in that bus accident is now back at school. is now back at school. And while she was hospitalized and recovering, the staff went way over and above to support this family. I mean, the principal, Shauna McDowell, visited with the family numerous times, and the staff collected money because the, the family was under financial hardship because of the time they had to take off to take care of their child, and they raised over $1,000 for the family. So, kudos to Pleasant Hill Academy for their support of, of this child and her family.
I have one kudo. This is very exciting, and I've taken, to a certain extent personally, because this group, the Country Music Association, has almost been one of the major partners at Aiken High School in building a band there. And, but the most important one today is to congratulate Christina Tierney of Rosaline Condon School, because she is the 2018 Country Music Association Music Educator of the Year. And they are really interested in what she does and what's happening at Aiken, and most particularly, are very interested in adopting the whole district, as I understand it. So, this is very good, and congratulations to Christina Tierney and the folks at Rosaline Condon.
Thank you. Other kudos? Ms. Bates?
Yes.
Please present retirements.
We have one retirement to announce today that'll be voted upon, and that is one of our principals, Lenise Ampukwa, who was the principal of Silken. And we would like to thank Lenise for her service to our children, and congratulate her on her retirement.
Thank you. Okay, we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Ms. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Our only speaker for today is Mr. Craig Rosen.
Good morning Superintendent Mitchell, President Jones, board members, Treasurer Wagner, administrators, staff, and guests. As our older students begin to take exams this week, our younger students enjoy closing out their school year with activities, and field days, and transitions for their new classrooms. Our teachers and staff are dreaming about closing their classroom on Friday without students around. Our parents are a little nervous and anxious, but when that time comes, I want to make sure that I am remembering how thankful and blessed I am for the school year that my family has had. And so, part of that is to make sure I thank the board, the administrators, and the staff, and give you your kudos. This is in particular importance as it relates to equitable access. As many know, over the last couple of years, I've championed for elementary athletics and for fine arts, and so I just wanted to draw attention to a couple of things and say thank you on behalf of not only my family, and my children, and my community, and the schools that we participate in, but for our entire city. All too often, you sit here and you hear negativity from community and parents, but I want to make sure that, in times like these, that, that we go forward and share some of the positive things. In particular, as it relates to fine arts, as many people know, on May 8th, at the Aaronoff Center, Dr. Rudnick and his staff hosted a community collage. We had hundreds of students down there giving a band performance, we had visual arts display, and it was, in its third year, an amazing opportunity to witness. I'd like to thank the board members and the administration who came down. It, it was truly amazing, my children have participated for a while. In addition, this spring, there was the NEA, National Endowment for Arts, Jazz Master, Michael Liebman, who came and gave a private performance before an evening show. They also held master classes for the students. And once again, for the second year in a row, Dr. Rudnick is hosting a Summer Jazz Academy for 7th through 12th graders. It is a very small, intimate group, led by some of the most famous musicians we have here in Cincinnati. In addition to that, I also want to talk about elementary athletics, and thank you for what has happened over the course of the year. Some of the highlights of the past school year and future plans include more team competition, better access for parents and guardians to sign up their child for youth sports, and a continued effort to increase opportunities for high schools and elementary students to participate together. Some of these that I am really proud of have to do with this summer, Summer Champs, or Summer Camps for Champs. It includes lacrosse, volleyball, soccer, and these are week-long programs that are only $50. And while you might think, how can they do this? I'd like to thank CPS for helping underwrite some of these programs. Some of the other things that are going on this summer is the Girls with Grit program, specific camps that tailor to the women that we have in our school. Again, I'd like to thank you, our basketball clinics, our volleyball clinics, our food cell after-school partnerships with King's Hammer and FC Cincinnati, in addition to partnerships with CRC, USA Basketball, and others. Again, thank you, I appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Mr. Morosky, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
I would like to present a resolution recognizing Thomas L. Conlon Jr. in honor of his birthday. Whereas Thomas L. Conlon Jr. is celebrating a milestone birthday, and is a lifelong Cincinnatian who is passionate about equity, quality education, and the environment.
And whereas Tom, the oldest of seven Conlon children, served his country in the United States Marine Corps, continues to work with the Marines in its local Toys for Tots efforts, and whereas in 1981, in pursuit of access to higher education for all, Tom co-founded student loan funding with his late father, Thomas L. Conlon, provided grant funding for the access program at Oberlin College to make higher post-high school education accessible to youth in Lorain County, and co-founded the trade organization Education Finance Council in Washington, DC, and?
Whereas Tom has been a supporter of Cincinnati Public Schools through his work with Sands Montessori, Clark Montessori, Parents for Public Schools, and spearheaded the Audit Committee for the Cincinnati Public School Board. And whereas Tom spearheaded the effort through the Ohio Public Utilities Commission to launch the Home Energy Assistance Program, known as HEAP, designed to help eligible low-income Ohioans meet the high cost of home heating, and?
Whereas Tom's love of canoeing, the outdoors, and the environment, has led to his volunteer efforts with Paddle Fest and the Little Miami Cleanup over the years. And whereas Tom's generosity and ability to make friends wherever he goes, has been demonstrated in numerous ways, including the time he discovered that victims of flooding in Cincinnati were housed at a local church and had no pillows, so Tom swiftly went to several stores to purchase pillows for all, and?
Whereas Tom is a dedicated volunteer, who was there lending a hand during the formative years of the National Underground Railroad Freedom Center, Prospect House, and First Step Home. And whereas Tom served as past treasurer for the Faith Community Alliance, and currently works with the Church of Our Savior to provide arts and music to the community.
Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Cincinnati Public Schools Board of Education recognizes Tom Conlon for his decades of service to his community, applauds his passionate dedication to the children of the Cincinnati Public School District, and wishes him a very happy birthday. Tom, you can come on down.
Tom is here with two of his sisters.
Thank you, thank you, very much. Say a few words?
Yeah.
Well, people, a few, as you know, so. First of all, let me introduce my sister Maureen Conlon, and my sister Mary Carol Melton, and who are one of five, and they are just wonderful. I take much, I'm inspired greatly by them over the years. I've been known to say, and you can think of whether this is true or not, that the reason that all my sisters contribute so well to the community, and share and give, is they obviously followed the guidance of their older brother. Now, if you believe that, you're going to believe anything that I might say. So, the, anyway, I'm pleased that they're here to be with me today. And first of all, I recognize our board president, and, and board members, and superintendent, and treasurer, and the administrative staff, our council, and, I want to get to one comment on this, our internal auditor, Lauren Roberts. Let me just say this, it was mentioned in the Audit Committee. I did have a notion of that, but it was Eve Bolton that really picked it up and pulled it together, but I was happy to do my part of that, and it certainly has resulted in giving much more credence to the information that's imparted from our Cincinnati Public School, whether it be financial, operational, graduation rates, and so on. And it really has, has enabled us to, to use that truth, if you will, in order to impart to the community all of the wonderful things that we have done and do, as was exemplified here by Mr. Souter and Susan Bonte in the 2020.3. It's magnificent that over the years, that we have been able to expand our sense of community and neighborhood. And this, this has been, and I've seen it, and I've been fortunate enough to be involved with it. If you're wondering about the milestone birthday, think of one of our presidents, one of the, maybe the greatest presidents, and his first two words in 1863, and I think you've got Fore-scorer? That would be 80. So, I'm, I'm happy to be hanging around, and I certainly look for the opportunities to, to be with you in the future. I remember when we had an Energy Conservation Task Force, looking for ways to conserve money, and I went out and reeled in all these experts on how to buy on the spot market or long-term, and the first meeting, I recall saying, just kind of a little curve, I said, "Well, energy conservation may save you some money, but if we buy energy smarter, that'll even mean more to us." And so, that, that was, and so I've been happy to be involved in different ways over the years, and I just admire this board and the ones previous to us, and just over the years, you can just see how we've grown. And, and our whole, it was certainly taken to heart with me when I was aware that the board had adopted an important policy to instill a tone and actual implementation of equity and equality throughout our schools that would beamed to our students, and our administrator, our teachers, and, and our parents. So, with that note, thank you very much, and I really appreciate the chance to be here today.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
So, Mike has presented the resolution for consideration. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comment? I just have one comment, and I'll be brief, but I've come to know Tom pretty well, and talk with him frequently, and we chat about all kinds of things, but my initial meeting with Tom was the year that I ran for this seat, and Eve and I were doing a presentation down at the Christ Church downtown, and I can remember saying to this room full of people that my passion was for kids, and I was not a politician. And Tom approached me, not knowing me, and said to me, "You are a politician, don't you ever forget that. Don't say that again when you're in a crowd." And that sticks with me, because it really, it really is part of that, you know, it's just the political environment, but it helps me to put in context that you do, you are in this role, and it does have a political flavor to it, and it doesn't, you know, your passion for kids is your passion for kids. So, I really appreciate that, and, and it sticks with me, and I think about it a lot as I grow in this role. So, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do. It is in the form of a video clip that I'd like to share with you this morning. Last week, we had the opportunity to highlight our young men who are doing extremely well and going off to Miami due to the work of Will Johnson and Miami. And so, this week, I'd like to highlight some of our, our girls.
... from an early age, new on Good Morning Tri-State at 6:00. Powell Serro introduces us to the organization, changing the lives of these ladies, one pearl at a time.
At Houston High School, 8th grader Tyra Richard is surrounded by hundreds of students, and at home by 12 siblings.
I'm the ninth.
And her mother, but she finds a way to always stand out.
At the end of the day, people will always doubt, people will always undermine, and it's just so, like, riveting to just go past other people's expectations of you.
So, she wants to go to school out of state and study mechanical engineering.
I love to build, I love to program, I love to build something and bring it to life. I love getting frustrated, I love being able to figure out problems.
And she loves Girls with Pearls, a leadership program empowering girls like her to go to school and finish their education.
And once the girls graduate, they get a pearl necklace.
We all know that we're still struggling for women to achieve equity. This, in a way, is an opportunity to get a head start on that for girls who are becoming young women.
They get to go to different companies, like 8451, to realize.
You can do anything you want to do, continue to spread your light and your love in this place.
I think it's very important, especially here, like, 8451 is working on being a more diverse organization. It's good for them to see people who look like them, to say, "Oh, I can work there."
It shows you how to be around girls that will bring you up, and in life, you don't have to feel like you don't have anyone.
Building up girls, one pearl at a time. Powell Serro, 9 on your side.
That's my report. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent.
So move.
Second. Question? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do.
Ms. Bates, followed by Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I am going to vote against item 5. I know that it really doesn't make a bit of difference, but I want to draw attention to the number of abatements that are being given in this city. I know that we are pretty much required to vote yes, and even if we all voted no, it wouldn't make a difference, to my understanding, but this is my act of civil disobedience, and I would like for that, for attention to be drawn to the number that we're being asked to vote upon as a board, and that are being given as a city, so other people take notice as well, and it's just not something that's taken for granted by the city.
Okay, thank you.
They're pretty hefty, too, if you see.
Ms. Bolton?
I have a question on page 5, the end of page 5, and I'm still using the old version, so I think the page numbers stay the same. So, one, Greater Cincinnati Foundation, $175,000, to support the operations of staffing costs for CPS Community Learning Centers for the 17 to 18 school year. Is it, is it that year, or are we, and, and what is it for? I don't know if it's for resource coordinators, or I don't know what it's about.
Sorry, took me a while to get down here. Thank you. The, we had worked over the past several years with the Greater Cincinnati Foundation, and have grant commitments from them. One of those was this $175,000 grant commitment that had been made late last year, or in the previous school year, and we've recently, I don't know the right word, is, received it. This will, this will be attributed to this, this fiscal year, and the use of the funds, funding will be for our community school, our school resource coordinators.
It is for resource coordinators?
Mm-hmm. It was, it was money. Mm-hmm. It was, it was money that we fundraised, not only from Greater Cincinnati Foundation, but other, there was at least two other organizations with the intended purpose to pay for our school resource coordinators.
Thank you. So I turn off my, while I'm here. Thank you. I have a couple of other questions?
Yes.
Just comments, really, and I can do it pretty quickly. I appreciate the change in, or the presentation of the notes for the five-year forecast, and appreciate the change and the dropping of the one sentence in particular.
Yes.
That indicated that we're, no matter what we do, we're going to be faced with deficits. I think that's a better way of phrasing it. And my hope is, though, that board members will look and see the comparisons that occur between the October and the May. There are some significant changes along the way, but yet the end number kind of remains the same when you look at the pluses and the minuses, which is what the treasurer had told us about last, last time we met. The one comment I will make, though, is that, you know, having been through all this for the last 11 years, and those of us that are really interested in the financial piece, and there are those of us that are, because school financing is so bad, we have limited opportunities to do what we need to do. And my view is the old tactics that we've used with some great success aren't going to be good enough in the future. We're not in a shrinking mode, we're in a grow mode. We can't freeze budgets, we can't go without for a period of long, you know, period of time, and we also cannot go back to the community after the number of renewals that we're going to have back-to-back-to-back and ask for more money. So I really encourage the board with the superintendent and the treasurer to begin to find new tactics, new strategic thinking, whether it's increasing enrollment, or whether it's the cap, as been suggested, or what, however, we have to find different tools. The old tools of the last decade will not work. So hopefully, this will be a bit of a platform to start a dialogue to find those new tools or tactics.
Ms. Wagner? I just wanted to make note that on the notes that were posted on Friday, when they converted them from the Word document to the PDF, all the graphs dropped off the document. So Kim reprinted them, just to make sure you guys got the most recent version.
Thank you for that.
Yes, Ms. Copeland-Dansby?
And also to echo what Board Member Bolton just discussed about innovative tactics and new strategic thinking, we also have to be more in control of our spending and just ensuring that our spending is appropriated appropriately.
That doesn't go together, but you know what I mean.
Yes.
And again, that we're controlling our expenses as well as Kim.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion?
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
No on five, and I on the rest.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Ms. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any inquiries or updates? The information on the bill, House Bill 200.
Mr. Hoin?
Yes, I've sent it to you.
Well, that doesn't help us right now. Just tell us.
You want an update on 200? It's still in committee. It, you know generally what it's about, that it changes the voucher program, eliminates the Ed Choice voucher, and instead has a voucher that comes from the state. Not sure what, certainly, I've also sent to you the OASBO's commentary on it. They testified it and opposed the bill at a hearing in October. So it's still in committee, there's no further update that I've seen.
Okay. So I guess the concern is, how urgent is it?
Right, because we received an APB from the state organizations to testify. So that's what I wanted to make the board aware of, to see if we wanted to direct our administration to testify, if the board wanted to take some action one way or the other. We're waiting on information from our governmental relations staff or consultants, but we probably, we may not be meeting again before action is going to be taken. That's why I wanted to raise this at this meeting.
Ms. Copeland-Dansby?
May I please make a recommendation that our admin get us any written information that you have provided or what have you to us immediately today? And we have a 24-hour response to our admins that can follow up with Ms. Bates about our collective desire to move someone to testify or not. It looks like we don't have before us what you're asking us to review, to support or not.
We've, well, finance has been briefed on it, and you probably have received something written on it, but we haven't discussed it.
Right. It sounds like we need some comment amongst one another somehow, in a way to either support moving forward with testifying or not.
And possibly Friday, we could.
Yeah, so let's say by Friday.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Going around right now isn't helping.
Okay, Ms. Wagner?
Hearing's tomorrow at 3:00.
Oh, that one, I'll bill it.
Ms. Bolton?
Might I suggest, because of that hearing, that knowing, again, financially, we have no interest in having more money go elsewhere, and we're in a growth mode as a district, we don't want these children to go to any other places but CPS, that at least we have consensus about that. And we know the professional organizations to which we belong are in opposition to this. I think it would be reasonable for the administration to compose a letter and make sure that it is in the hands of every member of the Education Committee with some idea of what it does, the devastation, and it also no longer is about quality schooling, but indeed the dismantling of public education is what it's about. So, I mean, you don't have to go there, but that's what I'm saying. So I think they need a letter, and to the degree that we are able still to have anybody testify, I would let them drive up to 75 and do so, but a very strongly worded letter from our treasurer and our superintendent, and we can all be the undersigned as well.
I agree.
Yes. Ms. Bates?
Yes, and also, the administration provided us probably about a year ago with data that compared the schools that had voucher students that were in similar socioeconomic status as our students, and that our trends, our achievement scores for those students in that demographic were higher than the voucher schools. I think that's compelling, and that that should be included in the written testimony. And those are all formally assignments. Ms. Bolton?
And I think that even included the one test particularly, I don't know if it was third grade reading or whatever, where we were even able to measure ourselves against the parochial systems, as well as, there was some important piece there. So I think that's, I think that's critically important.
Thank you. Any other inquiries or updates? I do have one final one. As you all know, our public, the board has a vacancy that we are in the process of filling, and we spent some time gathering all of the applications, and also spent time earlier today in review of the applications and other parts of this process. And our timeline states that we will interview our final candidates on May 25. This is a very quick turnaround so that we can meet our deadline before June 1. We will also make a final decision on that day. Friday's meeting, the interviews themselves, will be a public meeting, and then the board will go into executive session, and then we have to vote on that day. So in the spirit of transparency and wanting our public to know, we have made a decision as to our final, not our final, but our seven candidates who we will be interviewing on Friday, and I just wanted to give you these seven names. Ozie Davis, Marcia Futel, Renee Heviah, Kareem Moncrief Moffett, Timothy West, Bernard Young, and Kathy Young. So those are the candidates who will be meeting with us on Friday to interview, and one of these candidates will be selected, and we will announce the final candidate as well in the press release on Friday. The candidates, we will also be releasing a press release today on those candidates. So we appreciate all of the applicants and any one of these people. We know, as we looked at their resumes and their applications, that they all have strengths, and they all have areas where they could support the board. The board is looking for people who can certainly help advance our initiatives and our vision, and we really appreciate the applications that we receive. So thank you for that. Thank you. Okay. Are there any assignments? Mr. Morosky?
I have two assignments. The first one is probably to Ms. Worley's department or the superintendent. I know last year, when I was watching the business of the board before I was sitting here, there was a lot of effort put into opening the Spencer Center specifically to make sure that students of color had access to gifted programs, hence the gifted and exceptional. I also understood that there was going to be targeted recruitment of those students for the school, and I would just, I would like to know, A, if that happened, and B, how it happened. The reason I bring this up is I've heard conflicting things from school leaders, people in the community, and I'd rather hear it from y'all, how that happened. I also heard that in the letter, it was, it was, it was told to families to show up at Spencer Center from 10 to 2:00 p.m. to sign up if they got in, and then whoever showed up could get in. And it kind of sounds like a reverse campout to me, in that it's sort of first come, first served. And I'm just curious if that's true, and if so, why we did that, in the interest of equity. And again, I would rather just hear it from everybody here and just reiterate how committed I am to enforcing that equity policy as one of six, soon to be seven again. So, did that make sense? So the recruitment, the targeted recruitment, how it happened, if it happened, the 10 to 2:00 p.m. sort of first come, first served, at least that's what it sounds like. Yeah. And then the second one is, and Ms. Bates and I communicated about this super briefly, in light of yet another tragedy in schools with violence, of course, we passed our resolution on school violence, and then we asked other municipalities to sign off and support us, and of course, only Gulf Manor did. And I was wondering if, and I don't know who this is, and I apologize to Ms. Worley, but I think it's Ms. Worley, I don't know, but to send out a note to the other municipalities again and remind them that we've asked them to support us in our effort to keep schools safe, and only Gulf Manor did. So perhaps we could send something again to Chiviet and Amberly in the City of Cincinnati, asking them to support our resolution.
Superintendent?
Yes, I did want to share with the board that as a result of what took place last week, we met, as soon as we heard about what took place in Texas to beef up our security in our schools. You know, we do have a safety task force that's in place. We will have additional police officers on our campuses this week. So just really trying to make sure that we button things down as securely as possible.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, and I really appreciate the fact that among particularly the urban districts, with all the leadership that's been around in this district for quite some time, and I know that Member Bates particularly has been a real champion regarding the safety piece. We, at least from a standpoint of soft or hard targets, to the degree that our buildings are safe, we have very few peers nationwide. But I do think that what we, and this is to Mr. Morosky's point some months ago, and I know we'll be doing it in student achievement as well, we, we have to focus greatly on not just the mental health of our children, but also, we have kind of, I think, a culture within CPS of not wanting to necessarily highlight the services that we provide. There's been resistance to that for quite some time, because we never wanted to give the wrong impression about our children. But the one thing that all of these incidents have in common is that some person of teenage years is ill and has lost their mind in some kind of hate. We have a lot of services that we're providing, and I know that it would reassure the community to know how extensive those services are, both from our own staff and also the partnerships that exist. And I think we need to get rid of the, our predisposition to not talk about it, and instead be proactive and say the services that are there, and encourage our families to sign the appropriate consent forms and allow their kids to seek the services that we provide them.
Thank you. Other assignments, Ms. Bates?
Yes, and on the same subject, and this is an assignment if the board agrees, you all have received the notice about the School Safety Summit that's going to be held in Columbus on September the 12th, right? Because I had that all forwarded to you. The deadline for submitting applications for presentations is June the 8, and I know that we have been involved extensively in programming and committee work to make our schools safe. And I would submit to the administration an assignment to apply for a session in the area that you feel we have a particular strength. And I would be happy to be part of that as well, myself, and to, you know, provide some input from the community, because I have been contacted, and I think this would be a good opportunity to involve some community in a statewide summit as well.
Other assignments? Having no other business before us, meeting is adjourned.
Have a great day.